We'll call the Crow Wing County Committee, the whole meeting at 9:00 AM at the Historic Courthouse on June 16th, 2020 to order. What this meeting is, it's once a month, third Tuesday of the month. It's a time where the county board can have discussion and dialogue with staff, other members of the community about things that we're contemplating making a decision on. And I've got a couple of things on the agenda today. Number one, Crow Wing County Judicial Center courtroom build out is our number one issue. Number two issue, well, number two on the agenda, I should say, is proposed undivided interest accusation Ryan Simonsen. So we'll start out, Crow Wing County Judicial Center courtroom build out. John, are you, or who's gonna take that? Mr. Hoo?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, this issue comes before you. I had participated in a meeting with the area judges and the discussion was about the build out of courtroom two. You may recall, we have one courtroom that is basically a blank slate unbuilt, just down to the concrete. And I think that we have two judges, Judges Judge Demay and Judge Janis, who want to talk to you a little bit about what they perceive the need to be. John Melson is here to answer any questions that you may have about how to move that forward should you decide that you wish to.
Okay. And Therese, who do we have on? Do we have somebody that's going to speak that's?
It looks like Judge Demay just opened her mic. So are you ready, Judge Demay?
I am. And I was somewhat anticipating that there'd be more discussion with the board and with maybe Mr. Ryan and Mr. Hoo and then I would be available for questions. But I will give you a little background that I did reach out to Mr. Ryan and to Mr. Hoo about considering completing courtroom two because it's a shell right now and in light of the needs that the judiciary has as a result of the pandemic and holding jury trials, that this was probably a very ideal time to discuss the completion of that. That courtroom has been sitting as a shell for probably over 14 years. The needs are increasing for us to find courtrooms. We're putting judges in hearing rooms when they could go in courtrooms. And I think if it were completed in a way where we could appropriately do a jury trial and meet the distancing needs as a result of the pandemic, excuse me, now would be a good time to look at that. I did briefly discuss the issue with a technology committee that I'm on through the judiciary and really only have ideas for what the IT needs would be, not so much the structural setup. Okay. Did I lose you?
No. We're here.
Okay, I lost, I lost video on my end. But the one thing with courtroom two is in its current setting, we cannot bring inmates from jail directly over there because there isn't an elevator. So if we were going to have trials with individuals in custody, that poses a little bit different issue, but that's something different, of course, to talk about once we were to get it completed. So I don't know if you have questions for me, but I'd be more than happy to try and answer any you have.
Yes, I've got a question. This is Paul Coring. So how many, how many jury trials are, how many actual jury trials are there a year in Crow Wing County?
I don't, I don't know if Alice can maybe answer that better than I can because there are four judges that hold trials and we have criminal and civil. I can't tell you how many they have versus what, you know, I have. The number's probably not as great as the number that are set for trials, but I can tell you right now, our problem is we have several cases where speedy trial demands have been made and we have to figure out how to meet those demands in the current protocol requirements for holding jury trials as a result of the pandemic.
Any questions from the other county commissioners?
I have one, but not for the judge, but for John. Do we have some cost estimates on what we're looking at?
Yes and no. Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning.
So Tim reached out to me shortly after the pandemic started about a courtroom layout that would consider pandemic and COVID parameters. I reached out to Wold Architecture, who is the original architect and engineering firm for the Judicial Center, and asked them for a proposal for a study. So we have a estimate in front of us for $8,500, which is basically a consulting study with architecture and engineering firm Wold. And that would provide us with basically a schematic diagram, a basic floor plan and a reflective ceiling plan. What a COVID or pandemic courtroom looks like, I can't tell you that. This is a new thing for everybody. So as far as the build out, construction costs and technology costs, I can't really speculate on what that would be. I can tell you that if we were to build that courtroom out today in the same style as the other existing courtrooms, that we're probably gonna be in that $350,000 to $400,000 range to accomplish that. So with the COVID and the spatial distancing and glass partitions, is it gonna go up? Is it gonna go down? I don't know.
Oh, wow, yeah.
Yeah. Is Judge Demay still on there?
I am.
Okay, so I've got a question. This is Paul Coring again. So, so if we didn't have this pandemic going on, I think, I almost think we're, we're having a knee jerk reaction to this, it seems like to me. So if we were not having this pandemic and we were not concerned about social distancing, would we still need this courtroom completed? I mean, I, I know I've talked to people about who have went to small claims court and different things and, and it seems like, I think if, you know, obviously not trying to tell you how to run your business, but if, if, if courts would run a little longer rather than, and maybe run every day rather than not every day, I just think that we could use the facilities that we have.
And I'm not sure what you're asking about longer and not every day. Are you meaning longer than from eight to five or eight to 4:30?
Okay, so do you, do you personally hold court Monday through Friday, eight to five?
Eight to 4:30.
Eight to 4:30.
And yes, Monday through Friday.
So if, if, if the pandemic was not going on and we're talking about social distancing for jury trials, do you think we'd still need this courtroom finished out?
My understanding is that it was going to be a request to the board through the next budget cycle regardless of the pandemic. And, and if Alice is still on, she might be able to answer more of the questions of the juggling. Judges don't necessarily have courtroom assignments except for the juvenile court judge, which primarily uses six. And if you, if you've been in there lately or you recall, courtroom six and courtroom one are non-jury functioning courtrooms. Courtroom one is designed as the arraignment, you know, in custody, larger volume courtroom. Six is more the family setting, closer council tables, no jury box. So that gives us three, four, and five as jury trial options. There have been times where we have had multiple juries going at a time. We have had judges have to go and use the hearing room. We also have a magistrate that hears child support. We are a work area with Akin. They have been going through construction. We also share a jail with Cass County. We have judges that will sometimes request to utilize the chambers to carry out their functions. And in a changing world of technology, the need for courtroom two to get finished after this length of time with the increasing number of judges and cases, I really think is now, you can say regardless of the pandemic. The discussion came up because we are in a situation where we are unlike probably any other courtroom in the state, where we have a shell. And we can create that to fashion our needs as a result of this, but also meet our needs in the future. We're going to really have to be creative with how we do that because we don't want it to be just a pandemic courtroom. But I can't predict the, the future with this any more than anybody else can from a historical fashion. The 1918 one, that was a two to three year situation. And the first trial in Hennepin County, I believe it went all right the way they set it up, but the judge did end up in quarantine as a result of a staff member testing positive with COVID. I think when our potential jurors have concerns, a lot of our jurors are older people, we want to make sure that they will come into the courtroom and feel safe and secure and come in when they are summoned for jury duty. That would probably get you a little bit more than what you were looking for.
Yeah. So, I, you know, I don't know if you follow what's happening over here at the county board. You know, we're in charge of the purse strings here. We're answerable to the taxpayers. You're actually answerable, answerable to the tax, to the voters of Crow Wing County also. But I guess, I don't know if you know, but we, we put a freeze on all projects here at Crow Wing County because of the pandemic and, and some of the costs that have, have been incurred. And I'm just wondering, why, why wouldn't we just, why, why is it just, why would we, without having this go through the budget process and maybe consider doing this next year, why, why is it such a huge emergency right, right now? I mean, it just, that doesn't make any sense to me. I mean, is, is the courtroom gonna be, it's gonna, it would be different than the other courtrooms where it be set up in kind of a pandemic style where, where everybody's social distanced then, I guess, is what? You know, and here's the thing is, what, what happens if February comes and, and they've found some kind of a vaccine for, for COVID and the whole pandemic thing is, and social distancing is over with? I mean, I don't see this continuing to, on for the next 20 years.
Mr. Chair, if I might, I don't see this as an emergency request. I see it more as an ongoing request that it's been talked about for a considerable amount of time and considered. I know there's talk about, you know, enlarging the building over there, moving into that parking lot behind it and enlarging the capacity there.
So. Boy, I hope not.
Well, it's a long term, you know, you won't be around, Commissioner, and I won't be around.
I hope not.
But, so I.
I did stop the jail, the new law enforcement center for $18 million being built here. And then we remodeled the building that we own over here and probably saved about $12 million.
I apologize if you thought I was done, but I wasn't done.
Oh, okay.
So going forward, I think that this is, we're talking about doing a study at this point. We're not actually doing the build out at this point. There hasn't been an official request on any budget at this point. So the study of $8,500 seems like a reasonable request to look at what we should be doing or considering over there in a space that's just sitting empty and has for many years. So that's how I look at it. I don't look at it as a, you know, we're gonna start throwing the hammers and chisels around tomorrow. We're looking at having a, a plan in place to address some of the issues that now have come about because of the pandemic, but we need to do it in a manageable way, and I think that's what we're attempting to do.
John, is there any, are you aware of any other counties at this time who are considering building a pandemic designed courtroom?
No.
Okay.
Through my research and my discussion with Wolves and other architectural firms, not as of about three weeks ago, the answer would be no. Are they looking at making changes in their existing courtroom to accommodate the pandemic? Absolutely, as we've done. We've put in plexiglass partitions between judges and witnesses and we've social distance stickers on the floor and we've marked off certain benches so they can only use every other one. We've made those adjustments in the courts, so.
I think everybody in government should just sit back and take a deep breath and calm down about this knee jerk reaction of the pandemic. And I remember watching a, a press conference with the governor and they were gonna buy some building to store bodies in for $7 million. Don't need it. Probably not gonna need it. You know, I think everybody needs to just calm down and we go through the process that we normally go through here at the county, put it on the CIP list and, and, and then just move forward with that. I, I just think that, I think that, you know, it's a great time to say, oh, now I need this because of the pandemic. I, I just, I, I can't see it. I can't, I just can't see it. Do you have a good reason why, John, we should do it or?
At this time, you know, I'm hearing a little bit about capacity and I'm hearing a little bit about COVID. The, you know, the $8,500 study would not, if we do decide to finish out that courtroom two or three or four years down the road, would not be a waste. It would provide us with a baseline of what the cost would be to.
What, what, can you just tell me what entails a study? So a study of how, what the design, the study would mean design?
Not a complete design package, but a conceptual floor plan and a ceiling plan. With like, with a project cost estimate, if you will, that's the first part of architectural launch and something like this. And then we would go to starting actually on the design. And then you would get into where you really start, get down into weeds on, on what this is actually gonna look like.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, yes. You know, I think, I think as we look at this, we're gonna have to also, you know, really step back and kind of look at this in the, in the big picture thing because, you know, what's the courts gonna look like here in the future? What's law enforcement gonna change? You know, what are the people going to be, you know, put in jail for and how do we process that? So there's a bigger picture here other than just redoing the courtroom because we've got to try to anticipate what, what the changes are gonna be and what's the judicial protocol gonna be? You know, again, we're seeing that changing already and it may not go back to the way it was. So we gotta kind of step back.
I think, I think you hit the nail right on the head. You know, as I drive in here and I drive by the high school and all the school construction going on, and all the schools actually, of all the construction going on, the children aren't using these, this brick and mortar. They've been at home doing their homework virtually. I don't know, are things gonna change in the future because of all the technology we have? And rather than $200 million bond referendum, I mean, is, I think Commissioner Brecken said it, you know, what's the courts gonna look like? I mean, is it gonna be, are people gonna be doing it virtually? So I don't, I don't know. You know, I, I know when I go out in my area, you know, people are concerned, it's just like the meeting that we had yesterday. People are here concerned about their taxes, they're concerned about their valuation. And I think we, as elected people, have to be mindful of that and find that delicate balance of building more buildings, building more courtrooms, and spending the taxpayers' dollars wisely, I think. So, so John, what, so what we're considering, what you're asking for today is the board to consider the $8,500 for a study? Is that what you're asking for?
I'm asking for you to consider if this is a direction that we want to go. If we do want to go this direction, then yeah, I'm asking that we spend the $8,500 with Wold Architecture and get the basic floor plan knocked out.
Steve, what do you think?
Well, Mr. Chair, I, I would think that we should bring that through the budget process and, and discuss it there as part of our 2021 budget, if we want to do that.
So then the money would be, if it goes through the budget process, then it would be in the 21 budget. It would not, no study would start in 2020.
Correct.
Mr. Brecken?
I, I just think there's a lot more information that we need to, to be able to get. And I think I would be more comfortable if we really had a, a sit down meeting with the judges and, and law enforcement and say, what, where's this going? Along with being able to look at this before we get too down, too far down the tracks.
You know, I'm just kind of shocked today because you, both of you are agreeing with me. I don't see any reason to move forward with this. I can't believe it. Are you guys okay?
Much coffee already.
Much coffee. John, I don't, I think it looks, looks, we don't make any official motions here, but it looks like, I think if you can read the tea leaves, I think we'll just have to wait until this works its way through the, the budget process and, and see if we're willing to put that money into the 2021 budget.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks. I, I should have asked you, Mr. Hoo, did you have anything on this subject at all or? Sorry about that. I should have, I should have asked you. Well, it's not too late.
No, Mr. Chairman, I think that running it through the budget process makes the most sense to me.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, so it looks like we're ahead of schedule. Ryan, you're next.
You guys already have copies.
We already.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
So if you, if you received the map that I just handed out, this is a property, 40 acre parcel in the city of Brainerd. It, it is adjacent to City of Brainerd property to, to the north and west, Arboretum property to the south, and private property to the east. The, the parcel we're talking about is the.
Is now exiting.
Partially red, red, red outline and then the yellow outline with that pond in the middle. It's currently 75% tax forfeit ownership and 25% private ownership under the, by the Sullivans. And the Sullivans first reached out back in 2011, asking if the county would be interested in acquiring. And at that time, Kirk Titus, previous land commissioner, and Brian Pike, previous forester, took a look at it and they said, no, we would not be interested in acquiring that parcel. There's no county land around it. We're actually interested in selling the tax forfeit interest. And so fast forward to today, nothing's happened. And Sylvia Sullivan reached out again to see if the county would be interested in acquiring. And my, I guess for the, for the committee's consideration, I think it would be a good move to acquire that interest because we're the majority owner. We could clear up that undivided interest. And then once we own it, we could look at selling it at public auction or a multiple number of options. We could sell it to the city, sell it to the arboretum, lots of different things we could do.
So this is one of those cases where there's, sometimes there's a piece of property and there's multiple owners. In this case, that we're in the county, the taxpayers are an owner, and Sylvia and Christopher Sullivan are also an owner.
Correct.
And so even if we said, okay, we want to sell that, as a 25% owner, if they weren't willing to sign off on that, we couldn't get rid of it, correct?
Yeah, well, currently we own 75%.
Right.
And they own 25%. So if, if we wanted to sell our 75% interest, we could put that at, on public auction or sell our interest to the city or the arb. But then there, there's still 25% interest in, in private.
So they want to sell their 25% interest?
To, to the county.
How much?
For the county assessed value, $12,300 for their portion.
And then would, would we, okay, I guess that kind of makes sense. So then would we put it on public auction then? It looks like there's a big, big old pond there, so.
Yeah, there are multiple options. Public auction, we could reach out to the city or the arboretum to see if they're interested in purchasing directly. That we could, we could lease it to the arboretum for, add it to our 99-year lease agreement. But there's.
Is it landlocked?
It is landlocked, yes.
So if we put it on public auction, nobody can get to it?
There's one, a private owner to the east, but correct, the public would not have access.
So then, so that, so the public auction thing is kind of a no-go in my mind. I mean, the only option we'd have is the arboretum or the city of Brainerd. It looks like they've got a big parcel or I don't know what they, I don't know.
We've actually been pretty successful selling landlocked parcels at public auction recently. Neighbors are interested. Yep, a lot of neighbors will end up purchasing them.
So there is private, right to the, on the right-hand side, Coles Way, that, that's private ownership right on that red line on the?
Yes, correct. Yep.
And then the arboretum is the red line on the bottom?
Correct.
Okay.
Those trails are part of the arboretum trail system that you can see. Most of the arboretum trails are farther south, but.
Is that a 40?
Yeah, yes, 40, 40 acres.
Mr. Chair, if I might.
Yes.
Where would those dollars come from?
It'd be probably the tax forfeited funds, the non-levy, or we have a resource development, but dedicated public land management funds.
Bill, what do you think?
I, I, I for one.
Looks like wasteland to me.
I for one would like to get rid of it, but.
Yeah, it's kind of a tricky one because we, if we don't do anything, it, it probably just sits there, doesn't really hurt anything, but it's a chance to clear up some undivided interest and.
There's no timber on there, is there?
Uh, no.
Okay.
It would be easier to deal with if it was under one ownership.
Well, I should, I should correct that. There's about 10 acres of, of timber on the, on the southeast corner.
Okay.
But difficult access, it wouldn't be worth much value.
Well, I mean, if, if we've got the funds available and you, that's how the, you'd like to spend the funds, I guess I could.
I think it kind of makes sense to get that, that cleared up so we're the, the only fee title holder on the, when I say we, the county, is, and then, then we can decide whether to put that on the auction and, or I don't know what it makes, it looks like, what is that green, is that a trail?
Yep.
Oh lordy, if we went to sell that and cut off that trail, that wouldn't be, that would be bloody murder, I would think, probably.
Well, possibly it is a, the vast majority of the arboretum trails are off the map to the south. That's just a, a small section that we can see on the map and especially that, just that corner there could be rerouted. So they, you're correct though, they could lose a loop of trail. So that would be in the arboretum's interest possibly to, to acquire that, but.
So what about this group that was here the other day? Maybe offer that up to them for a million or so or? What? That's a good idea.
We'd have to take the trail out.
Yeah. So, so who owns the arboretum? Is that city property or who?
Uh, that's the, the arboretum itself. Uh that's the um the arboretum itself.
Oh, they do.
It's a, I, it's an entity or I don't know what legal um entity it is, but um Paul Bunyan Arboretum Inc.
What's the history of this forty? I mean, how did we, how did we happen to be seventy-five percent over owner and Sylvia and Christopher Sullivan are twenty-five percent? How did that all happen? Do you know the history of that?
I don't know the history and how the tax forfeiture occurred.
Okay.
I think. Huh? Mr. Hool, do you know?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, there's a number of parcels peppered throughout the county that have what's called an undivided interest. And the undivided interest means that the entire parcel is owned in percentages by different parties. So for instance, the three of you might each own one, you don't own one-third of the parcels. You all own one-third of the whole. And so if one of you stops paying your taxes, then that property will forfeit. That portion of the property will forfeit. Uh and so that does happen and it happens in a fair number of cases around the county. We have portions of a property.
So there might have been some other people in the past that have been partial owners of that and they quit paying it.
Correct.
And then, oh, I see.
And we will, because it's an undivided interest, we send a tax statement to each of the three owners for their relative share of the whole. As a matter of public policy, we could debate, and I think we probably should at some point. Because as you see here, a minority interest um can control what happens to a piece of property.
Right, right.
It's, I'm not sure it's a great thing as a matter of public policy. If a, if a portion of a parcel forfeits, the parcel should forfeit. The ownership interest really shouldn't be our business.
No, and I think that we've talked about this before, but I think it'd be a good idea to to continually uh work on trying to get all these cleared up. You know, and hopefully maybe five years down the road, we've got all these undivided interest stuff cleared up. That's kind of a silly deal. Well, it'd be nice to head that direction, but. Um yeah, I don't know. I guess it sounds like a good idea. I don't. And and this is, okay, so when we do a timber harvest and we put that money into the dedicate or a a fund, that's where this money is, you're saying, is gonna come out of then to pay for this?
Lu- correct, likely, or the resource development fund, just a a different fund that we have, but.
Okay.
Correct, yep.
All right.
Yep.
Yeah. Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
And since we've got Ryan here too, is that I know he's done a little homework, but you know, we've talked a little bit about wanting to sell tax forfeit land and getting back.
Yes.
And you've done a little homework on this about how much we actually have. Uh one of the problems we've got is assessments with that property. Am I correct on that?
Correct, yep.
Do you still have those numbers like in your head that you could share with with us, what we have?
Uh as far as special assessments on some property or just total?
How much on tax forfeited land?
Oh, gosh, um hmm. I I I know specifically Baxter is, I think, the the city that stands out, that has the most special assessments. There's a couple of properties that have um fifty to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, maybe plus, of special assessments on a single parcel in Baxter. Uh quite a few in the five to ten thousand dollar range. But I I don't recall, I I believe it's in the millions that this total special assessments add up to across all tax forfeited parcels that we'd like to sell. It makes it difficult for us to sell them, so. Yeah.
So as long as we're here, so should we have the discussion then? Should we, okay, so if we're gonna go ahead and buy Sylvia and Christopher's interests, so are we gonna put that on the land auction? Or or do you want him to talk to the arboretum and say, hey, do you want this to be part of your arboretum? Or, I mean, should we have that discussion?
Well, I think, I think if we're in control of that property, it's all of the above, you know, to say. So that we're, we're not acquiring actually more, but we're looking for ways to divest that. And I think that that's the other thing that we're gonna have to address, the uh situation of the amount of tax forfeit we land that we'd like to sell, but it's really unsalable because the assessments that the, you know, city may have on that, and especially Baxter.
Right.
Um we can mark it down to whatever price, but you know, it's still tough to sell. So it's something we should have more discussion on and.
On that, yes, but I'm talking about this specific piece.
I would, I would think if the arboretum would be open to that, the neighbors, that'd be a good fit.
But are you talking about selling it to them? Are you talking about giving it to them? I don't know.
I don't know that. I don't know that.
Can we, can we give property to the arboretum? Do you know that, Ryan? Tim, do you know that? No, we can't.
There's ways, we we can give property to a governmental subdivision, so we could give property to the city for certain public uses. We could also give property to ourselves. We could convey it from tax forfeit status to county fee ownership for a certain public use. And that's what we did with some other property for the arboretum. We conveyed the tax forfeit to county ownership, then we leased it to the arboretum.
I think if we were, if we're looking out for the best interest of all the taxpayers in Crow Wing County, it would be best to put that on the public auction and try to get the highest amount of dollars for it. That would be in the best interest of the taxpayers. And then on the other hand, some other taxpayers might say, well, it'd be better if that forty was part of the arboretum so we've protected it forever. So anyway, I guess we don't really have to have that conversation right now. But I'm, I'm in favor of buying them out so that we have control of that. And then we can decide if we wanna put it on the public auction. I think we should.
Sure.
I'm sure maybe that owner on Cole's Way, he might, if he knows it's going up for sale, he might say, hey, wait a minute, I'll, I'll buy that.
We typically have one land sale auction per year in the summer, so this would likely be summer of twenty-twenty-one. So we hopefully have some time to acquire and think about.
Ryan, how come we were doing, doing two land auctions and we were having one in the summer and we were having one in December then for a while there? Or one year you did?
Uh because we, it was uh, one year we did it because we, the laws changed. And we used to need to get special legislation to sell any parcels with over a hundred and fifty feet of waterfront.
Okay.
They changed that law that all we need now is just DNR permission.
Yeah.
And so we had a whole bunch of parcels sitting out there that we wanted to sell for all these years that we never sought special legislation. So that was the reason we had one extra land sale. Then last year, we had an extra one. It was budget reasons. We were, we were halfway through the year and the land sale revenues, overall revenues weren't looking too good. And as as Bill mentioned before, I've, I've identified four thousand acres we'd like to sell and four thousand acres we'd like to acquire over the long term. I I think that the board would like to acquire. And um so we have plenty that we can purchase and sell over the long term. So that was, that was kind of the reason there. We'd, we'd like to do one per year, but we we could do two.
Okay. Anything else, Steve?
One quick thing on that property, though, and this, this would be my idea is that you hold some discussions with both the arboretum and the City of Brainerd, letting them know that we may put it on a public auction to see if they have an interest and what their thoughts might be with respect to that piece of property. But other than that, I think eventually if there's no interest there or there's no ability to purchase it at a reasonable cost, then we're gonna look at uh putting it on the public auction.
Yep. So Ryan, is that like a big swamp or is that like a pond or what is that?
It's, it's uh, it's an unnamed lake on the.
Really?
On the, on the DNR's uh layer, so I'm not sure.
It's all lowland around it, though.
It is.
It's really not developable. If you ever walk that northern trail piece there and you look out over that, there's.
Okay.
Good for duck hunting.
But the, the total parcel value is at forty-nine thousand two hundred. And the Sullivans' portion of the taxes are a hundred and twenty-eight dollars for for twenty-twenty, so they've been.
And so we'd be giving them twelve thousand something?
Twelve thousand three hundred.
Okay. Bill, anything further?
Nope.
Okay, I think you kind of got.
Thank you.
Thanks.
The direction. Thanks, Ryan. Anything else for the good of the cause, Mr. Hool? Teresa, anything else?
No.
Nope. All right, that's it. Meeting's over with.